I'll call this meeting of the International Falls City Council to order Monday, May 5th, 2025, exactly 5:30 PM. Please rise as we pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For the record, all members of the council are present this evening. Next item is to approve the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions or deletions?
One addition.
Yeah. We have a correction on a charter commission appointment and the addition of a business license later in the meeting. Are there any further additions or deletions? Seeing no further, the mayor would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
I will.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Counselor Holden? Do you approve the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. The agenda is approved unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Next on this evening's agenda, approval of the minutes from Monday, April 21st, 2025, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve passage?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Holden?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Minutes are approved, five zero. Thank you. Next on this evening's agenda is the payment of claims and approval for accounts payable. Transfers, City of International Falls transfers, $324.60 from the general fund, or to the general fund, from the lodging tax fund. Total transfers, $324.60. Moving on to accounts payable and claims. City of International Falls claims, $403,858.82. Airport Commission claims, $111,912.97. Airport Major Capital Project claims, $261,895.0. Total accounts payable and claims, $777,666.79. Is there a motion to approve the transfer and payments of claims?
So move.
A motion by Counselor Wagner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Bills are paid unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Next on this evening's agenda is public comment from the audience. If you come forward, please state your name and neck, name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, please.
Kurt Wagner, 340 15th Street. I would like to discuss the blight problem a little bit. It seems like your blight people, their hands get tied when you send it to court. And I would recommend not sending it to court so for the judge to tell people that, well, you got to do a little better job, and nothing gets done. You would be further ahead to talk to them. If nothing gets done, hire someone to do the problem, whether it's mowing or junk, and then put the money on their water bill. They don't pay the water bill, you shut the water off and let these people figure this out a little bit. The methods you're using now don't work, are not working. Is that, anybody agree with that, or?
Are you speaking, are you finished, or?
Oh, no, I'm not finished.
Please continue.
Then we can, then as far as part of this blight, I don't know if this was investigated very well, but apparently there's a law of no mow May, that people don't have to mow their lawn in May. Well, the University of Minnesota done a study on it, and there are no effects to mowing or not mowing as far as pollinators. And I think that's just a good excuse for the lazy people not to mow for a whole month. That gives them a whole month off.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, that was last year, we just, yeah, we're not going to do that this year.
Good. Good. But the blight problem, I don't think it should be sent to a judge, the problem for Mr. Schimone or whoever it is to talk to these people. That doesn't get anywhere. I think the city should take command of it and give more authority to the blight people or your assistant fire chief or fire marshal, Baldwin, whatever he, his title. Jared would do a lot more, he would get a lot more done than after the third warning or something, send it to court. Because then it goes nowhere, then he can't do anything after that. After the judge talks to these people, then Baldwin's hands are tied. So the mess just stays there. And I just think that in committee, you people should maybe try to do something a little different because of the system you have going right now isn't working.
Is there a specific instance in this?
No, I don't want to bring up any specific instances. I'm talking citywide.
I would, with the fire marshal not being here this evening, I would defer to our city attorney, Chelsea Nelson. And certainly, I think that the council would be at a bare minimum open to input on the issue.
Well, I would just like yous to discuss it a little further and see if something could get done. Because there are some real clean cities in this state that I have relatives live in, and they mow their lawns and pick up their trash and different things, or they, the city takes care of them. And then, just coming in here, I noticed the steps, they're new within about a year or two, and they're terrible. They're not going to last three more years. And how old did the first set go? Whoever did that, and stuff should be reprimanded of some kind. I mean, the city paid big money for that project, and it's terrible. Enough?
Absolutely, and I would, I would like to add, please reach out to either your counselor or myself, and I'm happy and want to make sure that we all work together on these issues for different ideas.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Worth?
Good evening, counsel, ladies and gentlemen.
Could you state your full name and address?
Oh, yes, sure, well, Thomas West, International Falls, Minnesota, 1412 13th Street, International Falls, yeah. And I lived here, I came here 68 years ago from Bemidji. So I lived here a long time. Anyway, I came to share something that I cooked up by myself, I'm not, I don't belong to anything, nobody told me to do it, I don't answer to anybody, except my wife, and that's probably a wise thing to do. Anyway, the city council is facing a problem with, with the place for the city police, and I have an idea that I want to share with you, and I'd appreciate if you would consider it, as others would consider it also. And my, my claim to fame is I was on the houseboat when we were doing the sewer district, and Joe Bartle was there, and Jack Murray, and Jack Walz. And at that, out on that houseboat, they merged International Falls and South International Falls. Joe said to Jack, Jack Walz, what would it take? And Jack says, I don't know what's, what's Jack Murray got to offer? And he said, we'll take all your people and all your equipment and everything you do, we'll do ourselves, we'll do it with you. So he says, done deal. That's how it happened. Anyway, I was lucky during the time I, I moved here as an elementary school teacher, sixth grade, out of Holler School. And during, during that time, I, I learned a lot, and when I was working for the, I worked for the sewer district for a while, then I was superintendent, and I learned something from Jack Murray. I went to him one day and I said, we got a problem. And Jack said, good, let's fix it. And I've kind of used that model ever since. When something's broke, you got to fix it. I think the city police deserves a place of their own, not rented, but owned by the If you look at the situation, we've been renting space, and if you take the county's first offer, in 10 years, you spent $1,600,000, and you have nothing but a scrap of paper to fill for it. If you build something yourself for the city police, at the end of 10 years, you've partly paid for it, probably almost completely paid for it, and it's your own. And besides, you need it. It's, the city police are the only department that don't have a home of their own, if you can imagine. We need one. So, you know, we talk about the county commissioners and the city council, the county is in charge of the county, and the city's in charge of, is charged of the city, and they got to look out for, they get a lookout for themselves. The county's not looking out for us, and they don't have to, they got other things to do. We have to look out for ourselves. Therefore, I suggest that you consider building a building or adding on to this building, but build a building close to here, where you're in the center of the city, center of the action, and we need the building besides, we're already, several years ago, I used to work for the sewer district, and we rented the downstairs basement, and we got moved out because we needed the space, and that was a long time ago. And I know you need the space now, a lot more than you did then.
Mr. Worth? The five minutes?
My time is up?
But if, if you'd like to give a closing, and we'll, I think the council will afford you that.
One more thing, and I'll say goodbye. This is not going to add money to your taxes, you're going to have to pay it anyway, whether you pay it in rent, or you pay it building a building, the city taxpayers are going to have to pay it. And so you're not saving any money, you're going to be dealing with the same amount of money. And the second thing is, I want to compliment the city council on the work you do, and the city departments, and I know, and the city administrator, this is a well-run outfit. We have excellent people on the board, and I wish to congratulate you and wish you well, and stick in there, stay in there. So, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to close public comment because we will be offering that at the end of the meeting, and I would move to new business. And we have a special guest this evening. We have Judge Schimone and his treatment court, and they're going to come forward, please, and give us a presentation. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, and counselors, and everyone in the audience, thank you for having us here today. My name is Judge Schimone, Jared Schimone, and I'm a district court judge here in Koochin County. I have Alyssa Hackenmuller to my immediate left, she's our treatment court coordinator. And then to my right is Katie Deegan, if I got her right.
Yeah.
And Katie is a treatment court graduate from a couple, almost get close to two years now. So, we're going to give you just a little bit of background on our treatment court. I don't, you know, we, we should do more of this. We're, we're not very good at, you know, tooting our own horn, so to speak, but we have a very, very well-run, very successful treatment court here in Koochin County, and we've got some big things going on this year. Right now, this month is National Treatment Court Month, the month of May, across the country. So, we got that, that's a big deal, but even more important is this is our 20-year anniversary for the Borderland Treatment Court. And that's a real big deal, because Judge Le Duke, with the help of, at the time, Troy Radio and Jim Ebersbacher, were the genesis of starting this treatment court here in Koochin County, and at the time, one of the, one of the first, especially up in the northern part of the state. So, a lot of foresight there. It's, it's a great program. I tell, I tell a lot of people, and people on my right and left have heard it plenty, but it is by far the best part of my job, or what I do. So we've got a short, little PowerPoint presentation to run through that our coordinator has helped put together here, so just give you a little bit of background about what treatment court is. And the treatment court obviously is dealing with folks that are suffering from the disease of addiction. And so you've got definition up there from the American Society of Addiction Medicine, and, you know, the important part of that, that definition is, it is a disease. And it's, you know, it's no different than, you know, diabetes, or cancer, or, you know, chronic diseases. And, you know, historically, we, we haven't done very well in how we've gone about it. That's starting to change, especially with the research and looking at and treating it as a disease. And so, that's what treatment court is for. The treatment court started, obviously, about 30 years ago, in response to basically, you know, the incarceration rate in our country, and, you know, the thing, looking at something, and it's just not working. High, super high recidivism, and we can go to the next slide.
Oh.
Miss?
Well, you didn't give her, that's okay, we can go through this now.
So anyway, the, the treatment courts were, were established to look at, look at, you know, folks that were coming into the judicial system with, with substance use disorders, and because what we were doing in the past just, just wasn't working. And so, the treatment court is a team approach, where we, the previous slide, you saw the number of the team members, and we have the judge, we have the prosecutor, Jeff Nagloski is our prosecutor on the treatment court team, we've got defense attorneys, Erica Osted, there we go, coordinator, obviously Alyssa Hackenmuller, law enforcement involvement, we've got both Sheriff Headland, and then Dane Olson from the International Falls Police Department. Huge part of our treatment court, obviously, is the treatment side, right? So, and we've got a super strong group of folks that work with us on that. From the substance use side, we've got Gus and Sue Christensen at Rainy River Recovery, and Cindy Gudel from Northland Counseling. And then the mental health side, which, you know, is, is super important, because we, we know a very large percentage of our folks with, with substance use disorders have a coexisting mental health issue going on as well. And so, we've got a very strong mental health group, Mary Clark from Cedar Branch, and April Kraus from Northland Counseling on our team. And we've got social services representation from Ariel Olson, Janelle Feller is a part of our team from Crime Victim Advocacy, we have Alana Nordine, American Indian Advisory Council, and Public Health, and then my court reporter, Tammy Dobler, is also a member of our team. So, you can see, very, you know, very diverse, large group, and that's, that's what treatment courts are all about. It's a team, team approach, looking at folks as an individual, and making sure we can provide those wraparound services to, to work with folks, and hopefully keep them from coming back into the system. All right, so is this one yours, or mine still?
It's yours.
It's still mine.
It's from Jane.
All right. Okay. All right, so, we've come along way in 30 years, 4,000-plus treatment courts in, currently in existence. I can tell you, in the state of Minnesota, the goal of our chief justice is to have an operating treatment court of some kind in every county in the state. We're, we're not quite there yet, but I can say we're, we are getting close. And treatment courts vary, right? We can have, you know, what traditionally we call drug courts, there's DWI courts, there's mental health courts, veterans' courts, so all of those kind of come into the umbrella of treatment courts. Our, the Borderland Court is actually a hybrid court, and we, so we do both drug offenses as well as DWIs, so we are, we have a hybrid court. You can see the numbers up on the, on the screen up there, in terms of the population that we serve on an annual basis. This is nationally, average tax dollars saved versus, you know, being incarcerated. So, recidivism is kind of a big measure that you hear about, obviously, in the criminal justice system, and, and it basically is, you know, how, you know, what, what's the percentage of the population that's, you know, reoffending and coming back? And, you know, this is, this is where the treatment courts have, have really shown that they work. And you look at these numbers, and, and you can see that. You know, traditionally, outside a treatment court, you can look, you know, this, obviously, statistics, it depends where you look at them and which study it is, but historically, you know, for typical population criminal offenders, there's usually about 40 to 65% recidivism rate, very high. Treatment courts bring that down considerably. You can see nationally, it's about 16.4% for folks that go through treatment courts. Minnesota's doing a little better than the national average, and then our treatment court is at 13%.
2022.
And that's as of 2022, which is our most recent numbers. So, we're beating, beating Minnesota average, and again, I truly believe, based on my, you know, five years working here in this work, it's a testament to our team, and to the strong, you know, strong team approach, mental health, treatment folks in the substance use arena that really are making that difference for our numbers to be like that. So we're very proud. It's not perfect, obviously, it's not going to be perfect, we know that, and that's, we know that, you know, relapse is, is, is something that happens, and we deal with it. So, I think Alyssa's up next.
So, with all of that, why, why do treatment courts work? What makes them so different than standard probation, or no probation, no treatment whatsoever? One of the models of treatment court is that we look at recovery capital. Recovery capital is what you see up there. It's all of the personal and tangible resources an individual has and needs in order to initiate and sustain recovery. Now, and when I talk about recovery, it's not just abstinence from drugs or alcohol use, we look at the person as a whole, and so it's also their mental health, do they have transportation, employment, are they engaged in their community, what are they, all of those different factors in your life are good indicators that you're going to be successful and healthy in the long run. Another reason why treatment courts work so well is this model of the cascade of care. And so if you look at this model, there was a study that was done where a treatment provider, or a court, I should say, had 500 new intakes, so 500 new people came through the system. Of those 500 people, they were all screened and determined, 45% of those were determined to be in need of services. But of those 45, only 70% were referred, and of those 70% that were referred, only 50% actually started treatment. And this model happens all over the US. And what happens is, without oversight and without a team like the treatment court team, and all those providers coming to the table to work together and track progress and take care of the person as a whole, those people drop off the radar, and they don't get treatment, they don't get the services that they need. And so, treatment courts work because we look at the whole person, we look at the recovery capital, we look at the cascade of care, and we ensure that somebody is accessing services if we need to, the judge just orders it for us. And then, we follow through, we follow through on that, we, we, we work with them and encourage them to step out of their comfort zone and lean into hard changes. We ask them to change things, change the way they think, change the way they react to problems, we ask them to change who they're hanging out with, sometimes where they're living, people, places, and things, that's a big part of addiction and recovery. And so treatment courts work because of these models, and that all of these providers in our community come to the table every single week to take care of the individuals that are enrolled in our treatment court. So a little bit about treatment court, our target population, we serve what we call high-risk, high-need. High risk is defined as someone who's at risk of committing another crime, they probably aren't going to do well in traditional probation. High-need means they have a clinical need, they have a moderate or severe substance use disorder, so a clinician of some sort has to make that diagnosis. To come into treatment court as an individual, you either have a new criminal charge with a history of addiction, or you have a probation violation with a history of addiction. And somebody, somewhere in that process, whether it's your probation officer, or your defense attorney, the prosecuting attorney, sometimes even the judge, discussion about treatment court comes into play. And so, the judge will at some point, when appropriate, order somebody to be screened for treatment court, where we then assess, are you high-risk and high-need? The team also then looks at, okay, let's say you are high-risk, high-need, are you a good fit for treatment court? Do we have the services that can provide for you appropriately? Some people need inpatient, we don't have inpatient treatment here in International Falls. That doesn't mean they can't come into treatment court once they get back from inpatient treatment, but we look at all those things. We also look at safety, are you, based on your history and your, the crimes that you've committed, are you a safety risk for not only our team, for other participants, or the public at large? And that's where feedback from law enforcement and probation really comes into play. So that's kind of how you get into treatment court, and the population that we work with. Once you're Once you're in treatment court, the phases vary a little bit depending on the type of court, like the judge was mentioning, there's juvenile courts, veterans' courts, all those different courts. We follow a five-phase structure, which is recommended nationally by All Rise, uh, the National Agency on Treatment Court Best Practices, and it's on average about an 18-month program. So we're gonna go through those phases. Not every phase has, uh, an approximate timeline to them, but really, we, we're looking at the individual and saying, okay, maybe within 90 days, you can, um, get through phase one. Uh, but really, it depends on that individual, right? So phase one, really, we're just looking at crisis stabilization. How is your mental health? How is your housing? How are those immediate needs? Um, are you safe? Do you need detox? Let's get you a diagnostic assessment to see if you need mental health services. Um, and then our famous line that the judge has is, show up, show up, show up. Um, oftentimes, when you come into treatment court as a new participant, you're very overwhelmed because you have this whole team of people there to support you, and that's never happened before in your life. And, um, all we ask of you in this first phase is to show up, go where we tell you to go, engage in the things we want you to engage in, and, and show up, and the cloud will start lifting and things will start improving. Phase two, just an ongoing psychosocial evaluation, again, it's more assessment, we're looking at, are they attending court, are they, are they showing up with their PO? Are they going to their counseling sessions? Are they going to outpatient, um, treatment at Rainy River Recovery or Northland? And then we're looking at, are you clinically stable? Clinical stability is when you have at least 90 days where you are not, um, experiencing a ton of cravings or withdrawal symptoms. So we really wanna make sure before we look at, um, working on other things in your life, that you're getting to that clinical stability before we move you on. Um, and by the way, through all this, we're not requiring abstinence perfection, we're looking at length of time, like every phase, we want to see that you've been abstinent from drugs or alcohol without a relapse for longer periods of time. Phase three is when we start to look at pro-social habilitation, what's your lifestyle look like? Do, are you connecting with sober people and sober activities? That's really what we're looking for here. Um, and are you trying to be, um, are you trying to be sober? And what are you doing to be sober and maintain that? Phase four, we move into more of life skills, okay, what do you need to be a successful, um, taxpaying member of your community? And oftentimes, we're looking at employment, we're looking at getting, helping you get your GED, um, we even have some people who have gone to college as of recently. Uh, others, it's maybe just finding work and getting some good solid work experience under their belt because of their addiction. Most of the times, your resume is not that solid, and so we're just really looking at those life skills, uh, and we're looking at finding an adaptive role for you in the community, whether that's being a better parent and having parenting skills, which is where social services comes into play, uh, maybe it's finding full-time work, maybe it's being a student. And then that early remission is where we're looking at, you've been able to be sober for about 90 days, and that's when we know you've, you've hit some early remission, which is a good thing. And the last phase, uh, is recovery management, uh, they're only required to show up once a month instead of every other week, or, um, weekly check-ins with their PO. In, in phase five, there, we, we kind of take a big step back, and we leave it to them to, to demonstrate that they are accessing services and that they're continuing to be engaged in sober activities and a sober lifestyle. Um, so though, in a nutshell, those are the five phases. Sometimes individuals receive rewards for achieving milestones, we can do gift cards, we, um, do a lot of recognition, a lot of like, um, rounds of applause and, um, really boosting each other's morale and encouraging them. Um, we also have sanctions where if you are, if you have a relapse and you lie about it, uh, you may spend a night in jail, or you may have to write a letter about why cognitive therapy is good for me, or why I need to change people, places and things, and how does that affect my recovery? So there are, there are consequences and there are rewards to help kind of change that cognitive thought behavior that has been not successful in the past. And so now I think we're gonna go on to talk about some participant feedback.
And, uh, before I forget, when I think about it, um, when I was going through the staff, I think, I think we left off, or I forgot to mention, uh, a very important piece of it, which is probation, uh, obviously. So we have, we actually have two probation officers on our treatment court team, um, a male and a female, uh, so we've got Troy Rodeo and then Jodel Edens, um, so they serve our treatment court. Huge piece of the puzzle, it's intensive supervision, so it's much, you know, much more intensive on the supervision side than, you know, what traditional, a traditional probation caseload is, because, you know, they don't have 100 people that they're trying to keep track of. We've, you know, typically, we run probably between 15 and 24 is about, I would say, kind of where we run our treatment court at any given time. Um, so that's a huge part of it, making sure that we're keeping these folks accountable. So we've got, uh, a little bit of participant feedback, these were some quotes from, um, some of our, uh, well, one's from a 2021 graduate and one's, uh, from a current participant, um, and so these, uh, these were just some good quotes that have, uh, happened while, while I've been, um, a part of the, a part of the team. Um, the, uh, the current participant, this was, um, I wanna say, it was January of this year, um, and just came, I mean, I, I can't remember how it exactly came up, but we were just talking about the different things and, you know, that, that really says it all, right? Um, you know, I thought treatment court was just help, help keep me sober, but it's, it's really here to help change your life, um, because we know that to stay sober long-term, it's a lifestyle change. But I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Katie Deegan, and, and you can hear it directly from her, so, Katie?
My name is Katie Deegan, and I'm a certified peer recovery specialist at Northland Counseling. I have lived experience and understand that everyone has their own journey in recovery. Not everyone's recovery looks the same. I make myself available to walk with others as they find their path in recovery, keeping an open and non-judgmental mindset. I connect individuals with the recovery community by attending meetings or to sober activities. I am willing to assist others and present resources if needed. I wish I had someone like me early on in my recovery. But getting to this point in my life where I'm able to do those things was not easy. I started using substances and alcohol at the age of 14. I had a troubled upbringing of trauma and abuse of different forms. I went through foster care, mental health issues, self-harming and suicidal ideations. As I got older, my weekend drinking and drug use turned into everyday using. I became physically dependent on opiates when I was 21. That quickly turned into IV use. My opiate addiction turned into a cross addiction to meth. I know now that if I continued using opiates like I was, I would surely have been dead a long time ago. What a life I was living. Only till I got sober did I realize I wasn't living at all. In 2020, I was stuck in the most abusive relationship, unable to find a way out. That February, I ended up getting charged with first-degree sales, I will never forget that moment. Looking back, I think that it was a blessing in disguise. Because of my legal situation, for the first time, I went to inpatient treatment. It failed, but I had a taste of what it was like to be sober. I went back to the same people, places and things and continued on that lifestyle for a year till I got in more legal problems and ended up back in jail, to going back to treatment. Again, I did the same thing as last time. This time, I ran until Troy Rodeo finally caught me. Back to jail I went. January 19th, 2022 was the last time that I used. As I sat in jail, I made the decision that I no longer wanted to live that, the lifestyle I spent so many years stuck in. I wanted better for myself, I wanted to be part of my family's lives and be the best parent I knew I could be. As I sat there, I knew the only op, two options I had. I knew I was either going to go to prison for the five years I had hanging over my head, or to be accepted into drug court. I don't think I've ever wanted something so badly as to be accepted in the treatment court program. Almost two months went by, I did an assessment with Becky at Rainy River Recovery, and I did an interview with the treatment court team. I was accepted into the program. I knew then that this was my only true shot at getting my life back. I didn't know very much about the treatment court program, other than what my now husband told me, which, by the way, he was a very vital role in me being accepted into the program and helped me be so successful. I will forever be grateful for his support and him believing in me. On March 31st, 2022, I was released from jail, and on that same day, my husband was granted full sole custody of his two daughters, who now call me mom. My recovery journey was just beginning. I started outpatient treatment at Rainy River Recovery, where I attended group three days a week. While in treatment, I worked hard at understanding who I truly was as a person, what my goals were, what I wanted for my future, who I wanted in my life and what was most important to me. I did a lot of self-discovery and dug deep into what made me do the things I do, what would emotionally trigger me and why, and how I could change myself for the better. I would meet with Troy Rodeo on Tuesdays. Troy, would you aim me and hold me accountable? I knew well enough that Troy wasn't someone to mess with. I know a lot of people think that their probation officer is out to get them, but if you're doing the right things and doing what you need to be doing, your probation officer is a person that can be there to support you. I have a lot to be grateful for when it comes to having Troy as my probation officer. Another requirement of treatment court was to be involved in mental health services. Mental health and substance use disorder go hand in hand. Going through life in addiction comes with a lot of trauma, and I had experienced a ton of it. While seeking help for my mental health, I was able to learn to cope with my anxiety, triggers and grief. It helped me to overcome my problems and grow into the person I am today. While you are in treatment court program, you are pushed to get comfortable with the uncomfortable, meaning you can't just sit and do nothing. Treatment court wants to see their participants succeed and do good. Treatment court makes it your goal to seek and obtain employment. With the help of Alyssa Hackenmuller, who was a career counselor through JET, she was able to help me find a job that I was comfortable enough to try out, where I wasn't overwhelmed. Treatment court also supports their participants in helping them get their license back. I got mine back while I was in the program, and it opened up a lot of doors for me. Because of treatment court, I was able to become the best version of myself. I'm a parent that shows up, that provides, and I'm actively doing everything I can for my children. I make the people around me proud, and they cheer me on every day. I show up for myself by continuing to achieve my goals and work every day on my recovery. I show up to my job that I hope makes a difference in the lives of those that are still struggling. My parents no longer have to worry that they're going to get that phone call that I didn't make it, my little brother has his big sister back, and my husband has someone he can count on. I will forever be grateful to treatment court for supporting me, pushing me to do better, believing in me even when I didn't, and giving me the opportunity to prove to myself that I'm deserving of a better life. Treatment court changes lives, and I am living proof. Today, I am just over three years clean and sober and living my best life.
Thank you.
So that's our presentation, uh, thank you for having us, mayor and counselors, and I, just so you know, uh, treatment court, uh, is, it's open court. I invite, um, any of you and anybody in the audience, you're always welcome to come and attend and see what it looks like. It, uh, it looks a lot different than, uh, traditional court, I can assure you of that. So, uh, our, our sessions are every other Thursday, uh, but you can check the court calendar, um, and, uh, love to have you at any time.
He stole my thunder, that's what I was gonna say. But I also, uh, the first slide has, the second slide has a video from All Rise, and that video really shows how informal and emotional treatment court can be, and how impactful it is on individuals and, like Katie was saying, their families. Uh, I didn't wanna show it today 'cause it's an extra five minutes, so I'm just gonna send it all to you via email, and, um, I think it's, you'll really enjoy it. And if anybody has any questions or wants to come to court, my email address is up there. Uh, I'm sort of like the liaison between everybody at treatment court, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Nice job.
And I can, from I's, be working stiff, firsthand experience of some success stories that nobody thought were gonna make it, and they have, so, I know it works.
We're so happy to have you in the community, and this is a success. So thank you, Judge, and Alyssa, and everyone else that has worked hard to make this a reality.
Thanks, I, I should make them all stand up. If you're on treatment court, you're in here. Tammy, Dane, Ariel, April, Alyssa. They're gonna hate me for that.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
We have a proclamation for Treatment Court Month if there is a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden the second, was by, um, Counselor Buller, is there any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, proclamation is approved, 5-0, thank you. Item two is a proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week, which is May 4th through 10th, is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Buller?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, carries unanimously, 5-0, thank you. New business number three, another proclamation for Mental Health Month, is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
I'll move.
Of a motion by Counselor Kaler, second.
Second.
To Counselor Holden, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion carries 5-0 for this proclamation. Just a note, if there's a proclamation and you want to come forward and it's on the agenda, please let us know, um, ahead of time. We ran into that last week, and of course, as we do this, we like participation. New business number four, proclamation of friendship between International Falls and the town of Fort Francis. This is something that I worked on with Mayor Halikas, it's been a pleasure getting to know him. We routinely communicate and talk about many of the issues facing both of our communities, which ironically are, have a lot of similarities.
Yes.
So the door is open going both ways to Fort Francis, and with that, I hope someone would offer a motion to approve this proclamation of friendship.
So move.
A motion by Counselor Buller?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, this proclamation is approved, 5-0. Number five, new business, mayoral appointments to our charter commission. Three, all for terms, May 5th of 2025 through December 31st of 2028. Rory Walker, Craig Bernath, William Bright. Is there a motion to approve these appointments?
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kaler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Buller, discussion on the appointments? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, appointments are approved, 5-0, thank you. New business, seven, approve contingent offer of seasonal employment for office clerk position for the police department. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Pardon?
We need to say six.
You missed six?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, I thought that. Goodness, excuse me.
Yeah, I had to haul that one, got messed up.
We'll go back to number six, to consider the request of Packaging Corporation of America to suspend calendar parking during their annual outage and shutdown, which is scheduled for May 30th through June 19th, 2025. Before we have motions, I wanna get my plug in for Fire Chief Manasa, that he mentioned to me that when we do suspend ordinances like this, it's also at the most likely time that there may be a fire call. I'm not laying them out to dry, we had a chuckle over it, we wanna help. So is there a motion to approve this?
So move.
Motion by Counselor Wagner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler.
And I just, well, you haven't asked for that part yet.
Go ahead.
I just wanna make sure it's clear that, and this is citywide, not just around, um, PCA, when this goes on.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, this request is approved, 5-0, thank you. Okay, number seven, I think we're on the right track. Approve contingent offer?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner, discussion?
Uh, I'd just like to add that, uh, when they made the move and it was stated that they wouldn't need be hiring any more people in the move, that, uh, I'll be voting no because we were told they weren't gonna have to hire any, but I know Mindy- we weren't going to have to hire any. But I know Mindy, she'll do a fine job.
Appreciate the input. I, is there more to that that?
No.
Would like to be added?
No, it's just that, I mean, that was part of the move. When we moved, nothing was going to change. We weren't going to have to hire any more people and circumstances changed, I guess. And I don't think that is any surprise to the chief that that's why I'm voting.
Any more discussion? Is this anything that Chief Kosick, you feel the need to bring forth?
If you have any questions that are available.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief Kosick, for coming forward. I want to piggyback before I vote on Counselor Kaler's question about the staffing. So my question is not related to the potential hire or anything to do with that person, rather the position. Is there a reason for the additional hire?
We did it last year. We see, in the summer, we see kind of a peak in the people coming forward, ringing the bell. Our current administrative assistant works about 20 hours a week, three days a week. So this position would be to fill her, any vacation she takes in the summer, she could leave, as well as the two days out of the money through Friday. She's not working. And it would be for about four hours a day. So we're looking at about eight to 20 hours a week through the summer. And Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, but what is the rate?
$15.
$15, no. Excuse me.
Thank you. And some of those hours, if I understand, are to backfill hours that Heather is unavailable?
Correct.
And what do we do at the present when we don't have the seasonal position and Heather's not available?
Like I said, we technically, we usually just have vacations to fill in the summer. That's when she usually takes her vacations. And we see a lot more with the tourists and the influx of customers and the law enforcement coming up to ask for data requests, gun check-ins, anything like that. Right now, we don't do anything. People ring the bell and she's not available. We don't have anyone there. So again, we've heard complaints from the community that there's no one at the window as well. So we're trying to do a balancing after. It's more cost efficient to just hire during the busier months, just to get us through that. And then, like you say, backfill as needed, as opposed to increasing her hours all year round and doing that. We're trying to be conscious of the budget.
Thank you. Does any of the council have questions for Chief Kosick? Okay. Question?
Uh, no.
Aye.
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 I'm going to abstain 3-1 with my abstention. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
New business, number eight, consider request to purchase new vacuum splints for each ambulance with funds from Ambulance Capital Outlay Furniture and Equipment Fund. Request from Adam Manasa, Fire Chief and EMS Director. Is there discussion or a motion on this request?
I'll move.
A motion to approve by Counselor Kaler. Is there a second? Second by, Counselor Wagner can have this one. Discussion's open. Seeing no discussion on the topic, we will move it to a vote with the question.
Aye.
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 I will vote yes. This purchase is approved, 5-0. Thank you. New business, item nine, to adopt a resolution for the fee schedule for the lay-down yard. Is there a motion to approve this schedule?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's by Counselor Holden and Counselor Wagner. Is there discussion on the motion or the question? Seeing no discussion, oh, Counselor Wagner.
So all the department heads have access to the yard and stuff, right? For impound and that kind of stuff?
To my knowledge, yes.
As far as we know. So then, this is a good start, but if it costs more for us to do this, I just want to make sure we're fluent if we have to move it up.
The cost.
The cost.
The rate schedule.
We don't know yet, right?
Right.
This is a good start.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, fee schedule is approved unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, new business, item 10. This came from legislation and land use, to approve a taxi license for Taylor's Taxi. Would entertain a motion to approve this business license.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion on the permit. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, permit is approved unanimously. Thank you. Any other business to come before the council, from the council or staff? I would like to mention, from the previous meeting, there was a motion that was approved to engage with the county on law enforcement space needs. I signed a letter that Administrator Bergstrom had drafted that was simple and it went over to the county. And Counselor Wagner and myself will be engaging with members of the county in a relaxed manner to see where there's appetite for collaboration. If there isn't, we will move on and eventually we will get a decision. With that being said, we'll move on to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. Once again, I would like to thank the judge in Treatment Court for the wonderful presentation that they brought today and hearing some of the successes of the program. On Saturday, the International Falls Fire Department had their pancake feed. I think we did over 300 plates. So thank you to all who came out and supported the fire department and all those serving the department.
Mayor, I have two.
Please.
Okay. The first one is, it didn't make it as an agenda item, but you all recall the trailer, 2202 Third Avenue, I believe.
Oh, yes.
The land owner, so the trailer owner is different from the land owner, was going to have until the 15th to clear it out. No progress has been made, so I wanted to give you all a heads up. Our next city council meeting is the 19th, and we can certainly make an agenda item to potentially revisit and award the low bid and then reach out to that person and see if they'll honor that bid still.
For removal.
Yes. So I wanted to update everyone on that. First, and then Mr. Calder asked that I also follow up and explain the statute that was referenced about specially marked vehicles, Minnesota State statute.
Chelsea, could you speak in the mic so?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paul, could you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry. When I turn to talk to them, I turn away from the mic and unless someone like you reminds me, I don't do it. So I did look at the statute. It designates that a police vehicle throughout the state, they have different colors that are assigned to different police departments, says the emblem or marking on the sides of the doors is a certain size of contrasting color that's easily identifiable, is what the statute requires. And then it does have an exception for a specially marked vehicle, which is essentially what most people define as an unmarked vehicle, or an emblem or decal only on the right side of the vehicle, so it's not as easily identifiable. So because our police department has 11 or less, I think it's 11 or less, we can have one. It might be 12 or less, but that doesn't change the number we're allowed. We're still only allowed one unmarked vehicle. Okay. Is that kind of what you were looking for?
Yes.
Okay. We can maybe do the rest of the audience. Do you want to just do the rest of the audience open forum?
Yes, if you'd like, if you were going to come forward or you'd like to come forward, we'll just start the open forum for the public. No?
Yeah, I can do it now.
Was that all you?
It's up to them.
Did you have any more, Chelsea?
No, unless he wanted me to expand more. No?
Good job.
Okay, okay.
Dionne?
Please come forward. Yeah. Thank you, Chelsea.
Reynolds Calder, 1901 Sixth Avenue East. Thank you for that, Chelsea. My, the reason I raise this, one is I want our city to be a welcoming community. I don't feel that the cars are, I think the people feel like they're surveillance cars, not to protect and serve. And that image is important for our community. I don't care that, matter of fact, I don't want to see the city spend money on repainting these things right now. But I think, I think the law basically is, we're just allowed one of those unmarked vehicles. There should be a regular paint job. That's my position. I know there's the exception that you read. We, you know, that's up in the air. I believe we shouldn't have any of those unmarked cars except for one. And in time, I think this council and the chief should get together and as we phase out cars, make sure that the rest of the lot are painted a regular police paint job. That's my position. That's all I want to say.
Seeing no further public comment, I'll move on to reminders. Open book meeting presented by County Assessor's Office is from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the County Assessor's Office at the courthouse, 715 Fourth Street, Wednesday, May 14th. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, May 19th, which is in two weeks, at 5:30 PM.
Before you gavel.
Counselor Wagner?
Can you give us a update on the ban shell?
Yes, I can. It was also in my report, but I received a email from the adjuster, Mr. Chris Otto, and upon my requesting and asking for an update, he indicated that the company that he had reached out to was still at least at a minimum 30 days out to get us information.
So do we have any recourse on this that we can, city attorney can do or anything that you're aware of to move this along?
What are you talking about?
The ban shell, the insurance claim and stuff, is there?
I don't know. I can look at it.
I think we need to. I'm just, I don't know what you guys think.
We do too, yes.
All you guys.
That's unacceptable. 30 days to get back to us. That's been eight months.
Last time was three weeks. It's up to three weeks, and now it's 30 days again. After three weeks, it's up.
So you have to, if you could look into.
Okay.
If we got to take him to court or whatever, we need.
I'll give you your options before I just go ahead and sue them.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Wagner. And I also, it doesn't have to happen now, but I am curious, I know that it seems that every month we're paying Bolton and Mink for something to do with the ban shell, that I assume eventually is going to come out of the dollars when we do get the claim. So I'm curious about it. Any other discussion on the ban shell? Okay. Have a good evening, everyone. This meeting's adjourned.